There we have it. This is Dan, we're going to be recording. Another chance to up there, had everybody's mic on so we can hear. Good evening, at this time we will call our town, Wyndham here, tentative budget here for tonight. We have a lot going on, so we have tentative budget here, special call, town council meeting, and then a workshop on the 500 block for downtown progress. So we have three signed in sheets here as well for public comment, so I want to make sure that all the right people in the right place, don't worry, there will definitely be the opportunity for public comment on any of the issues that we wish to speak for. But we've got some budget items that will take care of everybody, if they make any comment, they have their open forum for the budget hearing, and then, as I said, we'll move from there onto the special town council meeting. So those of you who want to comment on boat houses, this is actually will be back in the second portion during that special call. So since we are in the public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak? Especially tentative budget, or maybe some, yeah, this is what it's. At this time, would any public comment that has to do with tentative town budget for this team, do you public a comment? Yes, sir, if you'll come to the podium and give us your name and address, and any comment you'd like to make.
Jamesen World, one first quarter in Florida. In regards to the budget, I believe I saw that it's a 50% year-over-year increase, and I just think that we're coming into, how this safer, coming into possibly recession, and good finishes, I don't think, huge increase in the property, inflation's up, costs are up, we're not looking at taxes, etc.
Any additional public comment on the tentative town, if we have your question? All right, none, we've included our comment.
There, if I can, real quick, since what comes over, it's advertised as a tax increase, but the military is staying exactly the same.
The same, yes.
And we have the lowest military within Orange County, so we're holding the line as far as the military. The reason that you have to advertise it as a tax increase is because you're over the rollback rate, which means that you're collecting the exact same amount as you did last fiscal year, and as General just spoke, costs are going up, in order to do that, again, you have to generate additional income, but we are keeping the military exactly the same. I know that I didn't want to clarify too, which came up prior to the meeting, was, you know, why are we meeting here tonight on this day, and on Tuesday, so we have to make sure that we schedule our budget hearings on different days, in Orange County, schools, Orange County, and that's why we're meeting today, and on the 19th, to finalize the budget, and since we're going to be here anyway, that's why we have a special called meeting for the resolution and the special management, as well as the workshop for the 500 block.
Absolutely, we have to take these opportunities when we can have everyone together, because this will start on the opportunity, the business of the town, we have to fit a lot of other schedules, as well as staff and council schedules as well. Wednesday's my least favorite meeting, but that's the late ones, sometimes we gotta get it done.
Yeah, and it was, the advertising increase of like 8%, which has to be advertised, and as we're seeing the motions has to be saved.
So we'll go over the motions and have this group as well to see, maybe you speak to the rollback rate, but I think we're agreeing the same. The only time you had any actual tax increase or increases in military itself, all the way back to during the early portion of the recession, increase with some very specific bill of measures, I think, still a little too cheap today.
Right, we, that was 2018, we're just 3.7425.
All right, council, tonight we have several layers, we're going to discuss some terms of the budget, and. Tonight, item number one is about the tentative military, the military cannot be higher than the 3.7425 mils, proposed at the August 3rd, please vote you. Okay. Motion to approve by Councilperson Rose, second. Councilperson.
Aye.
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 Next up is our motion to vote to set the tentative military at 3.7425 mils. Who's my? Councilperson, yeah. Councilperson Rose, second. Who was the second, sorry, I didn't, second, you're the second. And we'll begin vote with council. Aye.
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 Aye. And number three is to amend the tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, 2020, budget has been adjusted to match actual numbers presented at the August 3rd, 2022. Officer.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion to vote to set the tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, 10,411,000 dollars. Councilperson. Do it, yeah, councilperson.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or, here's an announcement, announce the percentage of military over the rollback rate, percentage of the military over the rollback rate will be 6.9%, essentially 8.08% on the voting. 8.08, that's just an announcement. So the percent of the military over the rollback rate will be 8.08%. Councilperson Rose.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next up, we will set the date, timing place of the final budget hearing, Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, Wyndham Town Hall, 520 Main Street, Wyndham, Florida, 3477. We just need to announce that. Motion to approve, your motion, yes, go, 247. All right. Second. Aye, all right.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, 6:10 PM, we will end our tentative budget here for the town of the budget here, and we will open our special call, town council meeting. First up will be public comment, I have a list here, a list we wish to speak. And to do my best, because a lot of people, there were three lists tonight, which is a little unusual, so. We have Barbara Fraser, we have Bill Sullivan, Mike Lee, Mark Keller. I'm assuming you two individuals are going to speak on. Barbara Fraser, Kirk Fraser, Curtis Porter, basically, and others speaking. Start with Barbara Fraser.
Karen, I'm here to listen, I'm a great speaker, my action is centered, so I'll be fine.
So Barbara Fraser, who said it's a client hurt time, let's go ahead up to the podium and make sure we see your name and address, so we can get your name onto the record, and should have all of your public comment documented. Bill Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan declines, Mr. Mike Lee.
I can, I'm, I'm waiting, I said. Don't often talk to you guys, the boat house issue, did you mean? We live, you know, around, and been here 20 years, and concerns I have are that these past 20 years have split really wide, and diesel, and the boat houses are not an issue for me, I have no real attachment to them, but I don't understand why the town really wants these things gone, or wants something, other than it was an agreement 20 years ago, and you guys are conscious of the feedback, but, back in a first second, Wyndham is so unique, this is such a special place, preserving it, and charm is really what you guys, primary mission, I think, the primary goal of Wyndham Town Council, and something saying, is to preserve it, not necessarily to change it. I think, I've heard a lot of different ideas about what we're going to do, what we're going to do is change something that's been existing for a really long time, and I'm fearful of that, and I saw what happened in the close-up fifth amendment, but, is it fifth, or they had the, the new part of it on that?
That was a change.
Yeah. That was a change, for sure, and the neighbors around it are really disappointed with it. I would, my opinion is, just because this agreement was on 20 years ago, it may be a bad agreement, it might be okay, but I need some reassurance that my peace and quiet, my life isn't going to change, because the town's making improvement, and I don't see it as improvement, so I think there's a better thing to do than that. What's the estimate this one cost? Eighty thousand?
I'm sorry, the estimate for the legal fees to do what you guys are thinking of doing, well, I can't tell you what, what estimate I'd be at this point, it's, it's not even tens of thousands.
You have a roundabout.
Anyway, I think that, that money's much better than doing something else, either improving the existing road, you know, we've got a great program now, really nice stock, and I'm not going to prove that, but my, my goal is to not, not wipe out one day and realize that I've got something that I really, is not going to improve my property or my piece of mind, that's my opinion. Thank you, sir, good to see you, man.
Just for the, well, like, again, for the harm purposes, if you're not in my, can you hear what you're saying, document it, or whatever, but based on what's been discussed in the motions that have been made by town council, there hasn't been a decision on what's going to happen to the boat houses after the litigation has been, that's still something that has to be determined, and I think that will be determined a year from the date that it was decided to terminate the lawsuits, not to, you correct, sorry.
And that, that was done that way intentionally, so we could have a proper process to determine what the next steps would be post-boat house discussion, so you're not narrowing out the two, the two items so much.
Yeah, okay, I'm just stating that it's a change.
No, it's totally a change, I just wanted to clarify for this.
I know, but here. It's, it's sort of like, we're going to take this opportunity to take the boat houses, just like, and then we'll decide what improvements the town's going to do to my property, to the towns, and, you know, it's, it seems like we've got the park control of course, if there was some real reason that, for instance, there's some, there's some shuttle button around about a pump station that needs to be moved, have you heard this?
There's been a lot of shuttle, uh, we need to narrow down.
This was, yeah, about a pump station, second, that you guys have want to move into Laguna, is this true?
Oh, no, no, no.
Well, it's, it's one of the things where Wyndham is, it's hard to describe, charming character, and we all live here because we want to, we know what we're getting into, it's not because we have a great street, so the best drainage, the best power lines, it's because it's a home gym, you know, amongst all these developments, we have, you guys have to help us from making this just another problem.
That's really nice, and we got to be fair and equitable for everybody with the three minutes, so I appreciate your comments, and I think we have the day on, end of the shuttle.
Yeah, I don't do about the, the, that's one, I don't under it, so, but thank you, sir, Mr. Mark Keller.
I was hoping that I could get somebody up here that would know exactly why this has come about, but can someone explain to me why this is an issue now or being brought up?
So, Mark, you'll need to come to the microphone, so we can make sure that we hear you, and get you on the record, sir.
Mark Keller, 226 St., so why are we doing this?
Why are we doing?
Why, why is this, the boat house is an issue, why are they an issue?
So, yeah, if you'll, so if you read the resolution, you'll see that the boat house lease, leases were not renewed by the town, so that brings us to where we are today, we've asked that individuals vacate those, those premises based upon the lease agreement that they all signed, that they will document.
What year was that?
They should, we, we just did this recently, the last few months.
What year was the lease signed?
I don't have the lease, 2000. Yeah, 2000.
Let me just skip off the subject, I'll take it off my, 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 please chief, I have a complaint, my grandson came into town a few months ago, and he was riding his bicycle down here, and it was 10 o'clock, 10:15 at night, I got up and biked him, and a police officer stopped him, and wanted to know his address, which he told me, and he looked at you, and he said, what's your last name, and he told me, and he says, your old man Keller's grandson, and still alive, I'm holding a Keller and waiting, so just let the police officers go. The reason I bring that up is that is with you, when I grew up here, this is, or, this is, or, John, Lee, Karen, was the town, those boat houses came up in 92, 93, and I was on the town council, and I said, let me tell you, my house, the way, and you know, things have been there for eight years, nine years, I don't care what the friends say, so you live on the lake, is your, is your boat house enclosed, does anyone have a boat house that is enclosed, or have a deck, sun deck on top of it, all of those are people that have changed the code, but if you had it, you got to keep it, and they're all around on the lakes, I don't have one of the boat houses, I am upset with the fact of other changes that this town government keeps doing, like preventing me from parking my boat, which I've been doing since I was 10 years old, around on public property on Lake Down, towed my boat away at one point, just to suit you in, but we're going to come, we're going to come and have a confrontation about this at some point. The government continues to take away our rights, and this is a taking, these people that bought their houses, they had these boat houses associated with them, they lived there, they've gone to sell it, or they bought based upon these boat houses, it's time for this government to run in a little bit, you're out of control. My next door neighbor called me and said, do you know a hardware, I said, I got a chainsaw, and he goes, no, no, I want to cut down a tree, and I'm going to have a hardware.
Thank, thank you, I mean, if you want to address the boat house portion, you can address the boat house portion, but we can't do a lot of this.
Right, we need to address this government, and writing, and a few people set up there and vote on this, and you're affecting other people's property values, just like you affected mine, even though I'm on Main Street, I'm not on the lake, but the boats need to understand that live on the lake that they don't own, they don't have root carrying rights.
Thank you, sir.
Kirk Fraser. Good evening, Mayor, town council, my name's Kirk Fraser, living at 415 Western Avenue, and what you're doing down council is wrong, people in this town don't have an interest in this lawsuit, so why are you spending your tax dollars suing boat house owners to pay their personal court money? I spoke with a lot of residents while passing out pamphlets, and it's, it was overwhelming how unfavorable the town council was looking on for spending town resources by suing their own residents. I'll be here, as we do need a favor, we have these different laws, we have the warrant rules for reason, but everyone can be able to be for the entire conversation, all of this, I have a reason, thank you, but, you know, you can start fixing this right now by going and knowing something, this lawsuit, a lot of you don't realize you just don't care for suing, Jerry the fake brother of the mayor, his father bought that boat house almost 70 years ago, the outstanding members of the community have served in the town council and the sausage masters, but every 4th of July, they dedicate their investment. Joyce Rose is a standing member of the community, she's been active in over a couple of years, Joyce is a town widow, but her husband Bill is also a member of the town council, built the observation deck and walkway next to the boat houses, Joyce has owned your boat house since the beginning of the years, Joyce, cheers, she's a fantastic woman, and she's been around here for a long time, deserves respect and learning from here. George Polker, Judy, Judy Black, contributed board to this town, most people would ever know, George renovated the old schoolhouse along with Tom Stru, he was the president of the historic society, he was cheering George a long time, then he was a grown, George built beautiful tables for your new town offices in his workshop, George and Judy purchased the boat house for $20,000 20 years ago, and finale is an active member of boat reach, now she's voted up, she bought her home from the former town manager's family, and it included the boat house, he had owned the boat house for decades, Russell Jentney in Shore City, at Boat House Street, this was Russell's included with the purchase of their home, three years ago, he bought his house from the former mayor's wife, purchased the boat house for $25,000 in the 90s, my wife and I, we were starting in 95, even with my hockey career, we took us to Atlanta, and purchased the home on Forest Street, Ron and I always drove down almost every weekend, and we couldn't, when the NHL went on strike, we lived here full-time again, and our kids attended Wyndham Elementary, we moved back because we loved this town and planned to retire here, the house we currently own was built by the grandson of the town, founder Kelp Palmer, boat house number one, which is our boat house, was built in the early 1990s, by Kelp Palmer, and has been in his family ever since, we bought the house from Palmer Love, whose family owned Michael House, for over 100 years, the town has never owned it, I want to make a claim to everyone that the town has never owned boat houses, so when you, when you, the town council, keep saying that you are taking them back, it's very misleading to the community, also, we did not initiate this lawsuit, we did, someone in the town council keeps spreading the rumor that we sued the city, and that is just not true, do the right thing, please vote no, stop this lawsuit, believe the boat house, we'll don't say anything very much, Mr. Fraser, thank you.
Hi, George Polker, 405 West Third Avenue, my recommendation is for you guys to vote no on the resolution for a variety of reasons, primarily because it's just wrong, second, Kurt alluded to the fact that there's a lot of misleading information floating around, and I would like to address one of those items that relates to me, I've heard from several sources that I've been accused of being the cause of you guys voting no for that contract that Mr. Martini and I worked four months on, and if you listened to the tape of that meeting, I know I didn't know how, I said, I hate this thing, I might have said, I don't like all of it, but I'm, I'm okay with it, we can live with it, and all the boat house owners said the same thing, we were ready to sign that day if necessary, and you guys changed it that night, and then voted it down, without even seeing how it sounded written, so, please, I'm specifically talking to you, Mr. Mayor, because it's been you, and your smile, like you go, I'm doing it, George, and I don't appreciate it, I don't appreciate it, and I wanted to stop, and I would like for all the other mistruths to stop also, and just start telling the truth, there's nothing wrong with the truth, and whatever we decide, we decide, having said that, if you guys want to talk some more to us, I think we're all alone, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Renee Chingalani.
Chingalani. Hi, I'm Renee Chingalani, I live at 412, and if you'd like to enjoy trivia night, you can sit in my driveway and hear it, completely hear it, I stand at my stove and I hear trivia night, and that's not why we're here, the boat houses have been a part of this community, and part of people's personal property, and I don't understand why this is an issue when some families have had ownership of them for 100 years, why does the town want these boat houses? What's the lawsuit about? No answers?
It, it's public comment, it's not necessarily human.
I've heard, I've heard people being answered.
When council has the opportunity to discuss that, they can answer that question if they desire, what we're talking about, the seeming is a legal and binding contract and agreement that is signed by those individuals who own the boat houses, and that is the agreement that has been chosen by council and voted on to not be renewed, so we are then asking those individuals to review their items from those boat houses, as they said they would do, and that people signed binding agreement, and they have chosen not to do so, they have then trespassed down on state. They have then trespassed down to staff and council members. So at that point, you know, you're left with very few room opportunities other than to allow the court to rule on anything once and for all that has been debated over time and becomes more and more difficult to solve as time goes by. So that is the reason that we are here tonight.
And what exactly does the town own? The leeway between the road and the boat houses? Is that what they have signed the lease for? Because nobody else in town leases the sidewalk in front of their business.
Again, I'm not going to debate the merits of the suit here.
That's fine. I'm just telling you, I am disappointed. I am so disappointed in you guys. And my dad was councilman. He ran one session and said never again, because they were fighting over that boat dock then. I just, I cannot see the purpose for the, what's the agenda? For taking these away from people that have paid for them? I, I'm just, what's the agenda? Just to have a lawsuit? I'm not buying it, and I'm not happy. And I don't think most of the people in Wintermere care enough to have a lawsuit against their neighbors. So that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. I'm so sorry, Angela? Oh, you both signed up. So you're, Angela, you do not wish to speak, or do you do?
Oh, I do.
Okay, yeah, thanks for your answer to voting. Thank you.
Angela Widdes, seven twelve Main Street. I'm newer to the town, see that I know a lot of people that we've been here for twenty one years and care very much about the town. I have tried to look at all the sides of this issue, and I know how complicated it's been. I know they kicked the can down the road really twenty one years ago, or whatever it was, when I sort of came up with this lease arrangement. Should have been taken care of back then. It wasn't, and somehow people wanted to deal with the mess, and I understand that it is a mess. But I also have to say I feel very strongly that to follow up on what people have been saying. We live in a unique town with some rival people who have built and helped this community. It seems to me that we've got two sides we've dug in now, and I'm just hoping that it's not too late to come back and resolve this. It doesn't seem to accomplish anything really for the town to take over the boat houses when in fact the owners, it would be very easy to put requirements on them to keep them up to certain standards, which some would help in. Those kind of things and pay something towards the annual whatever for the town. There has got to be some way of resolving this without taking them away from people who clearly, you know, there is the whole thing of grandfathering this was originally here. They are a unique part of the town. They form a part of the story, and we are very much getting close to losing one more piece of this town's story. And I hope there is some way, I'm just saying some way, that this can be resolved. I do understand it's complicated. Thank you.
You're with us, seven twelve Main Street. My honor, as being undeveloped review board, we hear people come in there every time and they say, it's not fair. It's not fair. Everybody has a swimming pool, and I don't have one, so I don't want a swimming pool, but I don't have a lock big enough to put one on. Or whatever it may be. And, you know, lots of things are not fair. I don't live on the lake. I don't have a boat dock. It's not fair. Well, we've had people owning these boat houses for a very long time. And I understand it would be fair if we chopped them into two thousand pieces and they are coming down to peace. But that will solve no problem whatsoever. So sometimes we just have to accept what is, and do the best we can to go to any part. It seems like this whole thing that's going on from here is harming the town in terms of reception, lawsuits, everything else. So, you know, maybe it's not fair if everybody not has a part of that boat dock. It's not fair to tear them down, destroy parts of them either. That's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Let me see if you're on that list as well, Grant. If you're not, I will make sure you will. All right, and I have to remind you that I miss you. We get to that point. All right, let me make sure that I have everybody that has signed up to speak, seen on the ordinance, twenty twenty two dash zero. I appreciate everyone's and public comment. Counsel, at this time, we have our resolution, which is our resolution twenty twenty two dash zero. Speaking to the gratifying prosecution and defense of the controversy regarding the third avenue boat houses. Actually, this is being the package council. I believe that we're gonna have some information of our legal representation this evening. Are you gonna start with that header or are we making us speak?
Absolutely, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is Nick from KSU, and he works at Gray Office in the eminent domain department. And also does land use litigation, complex land use litigation. And he is working on the objection action right now, along with Summer Vigel, who is not here tonight. But I want to make sure he's here in case you have any procedural questions or something that I might have to answer. And what we have before you is a resolution. I think it is very well described in the memo. And also we wear our clauses in the resolution itself, but happy to give you more background on it. And again, we don't think it is absolutely necessary, but I would like for Nick to have it, and he is part of the against the motion to dismiss the movement I'm starting this week.
Thank you, James. So counsel, we have new sources here. If you have questions about the item itself, as well as any other additional discussion that we may have this evening. Go ahead and any additional comments, questions, concerns regarding the resolution itself. Seeing that we'll look for air motion approved resolution twenty twenty two dash zero. We should approve that. We have second. Counsel, any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Begin voting, counsel. Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution twenty twenty two. Next up is I O G. Especially then permanent, this is like the world community just to sponsor a foundation. We have all your pressures and we have a presentation as well. So let's keep that. Don't get this question. That's right. Absolutely. Yes. Why don't we hear that, we'll hear from staff and from the event folks, and that will be
Jason. Yeah, you're on the call last night?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Hello, sir.
Yeah, no, as we had a public comment last night, we're fully open meeting. We notified this on the crowd members, that site. We thought we'd be able to throw an offer, advertising on the app and our social media platforms to make sure that we're trying to get as much people as possible on this five day event. Again, it's a special event permit. Typically, we do these in-house, usually they're one day or two days, essentially not anything that you would do a public notice or bring to the town council. But since this is a five day request, actually, yes, six days, a five day request. We found a group, now, which we notified, and Jason Parklanders, but also bring to the town council's attention. Now, last night, there's a lot of questions relative to the foundation itself. And then also we talked about some concerns relative to traffic, noise, whether it be a drain on police resources, public works. Police and public works is easy to take care of through our in-house law community. But as far as traffic and all the other aspects of the questions, again, it's up to town council to discuss with the event voters. And, you know, as far as their finances and their intentions for the donations, again, that's something for the event organizers to answer this question. So from the staff standpoint, again, it's based on their application of three to five, four hundred people or three to five hundred people. Again, that's something I believe that we can accommodate, but it's do you want to accommodate it? And do the neighbors really want to accommodate a five day concert? It's a series. But again, when I first heard the concert, I felt thousands of people and so forth. But again, as I'm talking to them more and more frequently, and found out that there's mostly decisive flyers and church flyers coming in the bottom line. If there's any staff questions, we won't have to answer those, but on any, we're cheap. But
we have a representative here this evening? So I thought, I thought
they, you know, it's only gender tonight.
Yeah, not a problem. And I think, you know, for the most part, we heard quite a bit last night during the during the virtual workshop. So we appreciate town staff out of that. And as well as everyone joining us to give their thoughts and opinions. If there are questions, answer them as we could in terms of the
We're gonna answer questions that I can't, if you have representation.
We know how food trucks, like I've spent
Yeah, I believe they mentioned at the very beginning, they were thinking about concessions. They wanted to support local businesses. The problem is we don't have businesses that serve food at night. And we're not having food truck at that time. So their resolution to that will just be having free food trucks, which again, move places from the town hall far away from residents and and most.
Just a quick question, Robert. So I see the layout plan for optional areas for generators and control booths in a space location. They didn't provide any parking locations or parking plans for any supporting documentation for logistics of the request provided.
No, that is the only thing they provided for the special event permit was the location of the stage. There's option one and option two. Definitely recommend option one, because we're gonna be taking down the three D room. I believe sometime in, hopefully, October. The parking will be utilized for the choirs and staff, the volunteers on the forest on the southeast corner. But again, with the amount of people that they're suggesting will come, we've accommodated that all the way through the food trucks, the light food truck night, typically a well attended food truck, that's a fifteen hundred to two thousand people. They're looking at three to five hundred people, mostly families or relatives of those that are gonna be singing or require. Unfortunately.
So the revenue collection, they're, they're gonna be handled by the town.
Yeah, and they're gonna be done by the town, or they would have to require to do it. And we would have, of course, that plan, again, have to come from public works to make sure that we approve that plan. But all trash and debris would have to meet up that night, so we can enjoy the grounds the night after, the day after. Because again, this is kind of the sorts of blockings.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Or voting on this? Then we will, yeah, we have a vote on that.
Yeah, the reason why they, they wanted it on, you know, a social call meeting was because if they're not able to do it here, they're, they're gonna be required to find alternate locations. So there's like on parks and or gambling. And this was their first choice when we had a meeting with them. So I'd like to get town houses comfortable sooner than later, so I can give them the opportunity to find a location before it goes up. Because right now, that's the only window we have open for December, that we don't have town hall occupied or rented. Again, that's a Monday, Friday event, presumably on Saturday, with what is happening.
There's nobody here representing you?
No, nine. The, and then it's due to the Madison thirteen. It's really light agenda.
I mean, I, I, eighty percent of the people I've spoken to, in other words, four out of five are not in favor of this. And I, I would like to get, you know, it sounds, sounds more drastic, say eighty percent. I would like to get more resident, but I think it's been a very short window of opportunity for residents to comment about this. I'm concerned about, you know, a five day event. You know, we've never had a five day event, and I can recall when we used to have two day, three board, three view events, no offense to you. But, you know, a lot of residents got weary of it towards the end of the second day, so I'm envisioning a, you know, a five day event. And, you know, I, I meant to ask if there's any other possibility. It's like, I'd be fine with a one or two day event. I'm not comfortable with a five day event. Yeah, not personally, I'm not comfortable with the people I've spoken to are not in favor of it. But like I said, I've only spoken to five people, and, you know, there's a lot of other questions that I think people would want to have a party. And, you know, there, there is expected this to be an annual, a annual thing here in our town. And it's a huge commitment for us, for our residents, staff and police. I'm not comfortable voting on something in such a short window. Let's have, I'd like to get more answers from the residents.
Then we did provide, I think, we minimal, provide minimal of two weeks notice to residents for any comment or public input. And I think that we hit that window. You know, there was some back and forth because we wouldn't allow them to facilitate that Saturday, so I think there were multiple locations. And then we had, it's time to give us a decision, a plea application before, they said that they were before, but as you heard from the discussion last night, I believe that they were looking for six, but minimum five, and they were stating at that meeting, which mostly did attend, that they would not be able to do a two or three day event after.
I, I think the issue is purely economics in terms of that, that's what we need. It's, you're gonna do the event. They for them to do it, it probably takes five or six days to make the numbers work. That, of course, is not a work issue, you know, it's not the town's issue, it's just like an event issue. So I don't think there is I'm pretty sure I heard pretty a lot of clear, there's not often for shorter events. I think it's either this or, or not doing it. That is what they would need from us. Yeah, I think they have four, four acts, four timers that they need to do it. Yeah, and I'm sure it's just a matter of two, if we're gonna bring all the infrastructure for that, I think we need some kind of processes that we're able to turn. We need to be proud of things, like it's just a project. Like decision on their part. But again, that's not, that's not town council, it's a town of wintermears issue. Then it's not fit, and you know, I mean, I'm not be affected, so I'm just gonna get, there's gonna be that on that. Other than two, I think, I think they are on a pretty certain time. They're gonna need to, you know, the initial location, and it's not something that is gonna be improved by council.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is very important, so you know, for how council's looking as far as the body of that event, someone won't get them some sort of answer saying it wasn't, you know, yes, this isn't fit, it's not wintermear, maybe you need to find another patient. As far as the annual thing, you know, this is just a winter permit. This is such a one, it's like, you This is such a one, it's like, you said, after, then, you know, making it a yearly plan, but but by no means do you provision to be that, it would be a definite.
I'm here. So Councilperson Martine, if you have something. First place.
Thank you, Eric. I'm leaning on the same way. I've got concerns of two day, uh, art festivals. And that's any of our two day plus. But our whole two day festival is at least, it puts a lot of strain on public works, it puts a lot of strain on residents, and those accounts where. When I heard about this two weeks ago, I was curious to know if someone had heard anything about it, came up, in one of my other committees. That's, we found out information from these things. On it, I just, they're like, oh, it's schools, flyers, this, is that a fifteen person choir, is that a seventy five person choir? How do they get here? It's a school bus, they're with their parents, right in there. Three, four hundred people? Yeah, not such a big deal, if they're all coming, it's three or four. But everybody drives themselves, and everybody relatives drives themselves. We're going to have a bigger parking issue than I think we could overcome. Like that, it would look like a food truck night, but five to three days.
Awesome, awesome. Just one quick question again, Robert. So you said you should put flyers out for people within five hundred feet. There's none in the packet, is that, am I incorrect in assuming that you didn't have any return?
It wasn't similar to what you see at a zero B meeting, meaning that we just send out knockers. So like for public information meetings, you're going to send out the door knockers. It's not one, any response here, so we're assuming for awareness.
Different, but we do that for notification purposes, especially if this was directly impacted. And kind of, these are part of the whole.
Like old, they're maybe, you had that, it was going to be impacted if other.
Yeah, I, I have issues with the traffic that I think will create parking issues. And I tried very hard to find more information about this, uh, arc.
Parking, parking.
Arc, yeah.
Probably not saying it right, but that's what.
And it seems like it's fairly new. I don't think we have a lot of track record to judge whether they're even, you know, a viable organization. If something goes wrong, I don't know if they know how to handle it. So I'm, I'm not in favor.
I think it's, for me, it's, you know, I, I enjoy stuff like that, but I actually, I can't qualify these several. It's crazy. I, I don't live in a council, I actually understand. I don't know, I, but I like holidays, so, so if I were, you know. But I would have to say, for the rest of the state, in the cleanup or traffic, and I just see that would be annoying. If, and I know they can't lessen the days, so I can't help it. Unless, unless I was, I didn't hear anybody on the call last night for any kind of support from the public, I was kind of hoping people would. They're alive on the call.
Yeah, there was like five residents, there was one in support. And then Jason who's here had a lot of concerns that the trucks and trucks with the awaken. But again, this is something that you would table to the thirteen, you wouldn't be able to overcome, agree, but yeah, and still would have to overcome that hurdle, then why, why table it and then just decisions on it.
So you did have one person sign some public comment on that, and that is, Jason Roland?
Yes, Scott Saler, I'm from here in Florida. I was on this Zoom call, and there were a lot of questions asked of that charity. And I don't feel we were really transparent in answering them. But more than that, the town of Winnebago, you know, we produce, we have our own events and do a great job of those events. I really question why a group would want to come into me here and put on something, in a sense, use the town as good being for a fundraiser, especially one that's going to go public needs. And that brings a lot of concerns with the traffic, with reputation of the charity, how that money can be spent. Just, just a lot of stuff that I think, something that is just not suitable for the town. Put it bluntly.
Thank you, sir. Council, just, as you have additional comments, questions, concerns, we can. They table it? You know, if it's been changed, it's practically too awesome.
I don't know what I can say to change my mind.
Other residents, and we've already had a workshop with, right, with.
I, I would like to suggest that we, I want to make a motion to deny this off the, they get two night event, if they can swing it. Two nights, I would be open to that. I just don't think a five day event is a suitable fit for our town, with the resources that we got. Especially because this does not benefit the town. Benefits that charity sold it, and the other charities that they contribute. It's not, it's not a fit for our town, for our residents, or our staff, or our police. Either financially, musically, yes, of course, I love Christmas music too. I don't want to be cringe here, but that's, don't smile, whatever, don't smile, whatever you, all right, say it. Oh, I, I guess I can second that. I mean, could you do, could you do a team, you know, and say that, that you're going to make a motion to deny a five day, or to deny the five day permit if, if at that point and that, if they want to come back with a shorter event window, that we didn't.
Yeah, we would just.
So we'll just deny this, and that's, you can give them the message if that's okay with you. Staff will provide that information for them if they want to come back with a shorter window.
And they heard, they could reapply for a special event permit with the lower amount of days. And we can get that with, you know, there's thirteen, if they're willing to, to make that accommodation.
So we, so at this point, we have on the floor a motion by Councilperson Martine to deny the special event permit for likeable community Christmas sponsor. Twelve, five to twelve, ten, twenty, twenty two.
I'll second that.
Second, please, Councilperson Martine. Council needs further discussion on this question. That'd be in both the questions.
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you, Council. Any additional, uh, council liaison reports at this time? We staff.
Not at the sun.
We will do. Um, we have, we have elders' lunch in October. Thanks. Well, it is, it is October fourth, yeah, October fourth, Tuesday. We'll also add a, an evening, a nine o'clock, before it starts right out at the nine eleven morning. A small kind of incident, Sunday, Tuesday, for everybody. Let that date it while we're out marketing. At seven, five, seven, seven, we'll have music, you know, quick message, the opportunity to. So. Captain will be there. P M, a little different, right? So, yeah, so we're already doing the evening, how many folks want to be? See you, everybody. Thank you. It's time. So the P M, the rooms are special for all town council leaders. We will open our town engineer workshop, uh, September seventh, twenty twenty two, at seven. That very clock, this is, that's the five hundred block. Healthing plans and especially the Johnson, we closed the building plans and tree plan, and space plan, tree.
Mary's my heart, I'm in the town of Waverly, right, from Melissa Waytrum, who is the town planner. And the app of innocence is here, and they're more associates. But again, they are separated from our engineers that were constantly, civil engineering and traffic engineer.
Thank you, sir. Will you see, brother?
Thanks, sir. And it's Robert's end, right, the next way, so he's a project planner. So I don't have a long presentation for time, just want to give you an overview of where we are in the process and what's happening. And I'm here to go with the afternoon, and that is special town council. On that town council, it's only rare, part of the condition of this private is, it's a few weeks, I come to the council for a few workshops. Which is their second time that they are before you can see what, where they are in the process, they're continuing to design the project. As discussed last time, they actively have to use the area of the buildings over what was originally anticipated. Originally, it was approved twenty one thousand seven fifty, actually now they're coming in at ninety seven thousand five hundred and seventy five. So it's, it's all a change. I will say the facility project in process, it's, it's not done, it's not ready for any final reviews. I will also, as you know, as Robert said, my civil engineer, we do the civil plants, so we have a limited review of it, and that discussion is ongoing with that part. So again, this is still a, a private promotion. What we have before you this evening is the most recent plan that was submitted to the town. Also, also the landscape, I will say briefly, the discussion about this, there were issues with tree on moving. That's all I'll say on my part, I'll let the tree board, I'll address that more specifically. But there are, and what, the new part that's before you this evening, it didn't provide a branding of a potential building elevation, but what it looks like is in the front for the council's information consideration. Again, there's still work to be done with those, and more detail that is required ultimately, when it comes to, when it comes to a pretty final public hearing. So again, this is the second workshop, the developer's secret, you all, that will take off, present, make your feedback, and this probably will be the fourth. Would they have answered some questions at this point, or are they right?
Do you want to refer your presentation?
He's drawn the short story.
Who's up next? I'd like to say we got a little night, we got, we did it last week.
Good evening, sorry about the confusion. I'm Brett Argus, I'm with the Capital Group, we are the development partners for the property owners. And I have with me tonight, our engineer, Kimberly Warren, our arborist, and our representative from the architect, Scott Cornea, and I'm a little close from our office. We have somewhere, I thought, a electronic package to go over tonight. Okay, so there it is up on the board.
There we have the, I believe, three or four exhibits, and then the elevation rendering. So that's the buildings, I think the tree canopy, which is blue.
Yes.
And then the renderings, which will be the final exhibit package.
So this is the overall landscape plan, as it stands right now, showing the, the crosshatch marks are of the trees that have been, be remaining on the property. And there's a, there were some comments at the, at the last tree board hearing that we had along Oakdale. My understanding, and I can see some comments as well, we were, overall, we're in pretty good shape with our landscape plans. There were some questions regarding protection of root balls along Oakdale, because there's a large number of trees that are going to remain, and we're putting undercanted landscaping along the wall, that will also be put along that. The wall has now been staked as well. I know there was some, a bit of a hot, hot fire, there's stakes out there, they, they had a survey come up for this, testing again. To stake the proper corners, you can see those forty five degree angles on the wall. So all of those are staked now, so you can see wall interactions of existing trees. And then the landscape plan, kind of relates that. This is kind of the overarching concept here, that at the end of the day, we're required to have a fairly robust landscape buffer along that street, which we will have. We're required to stake the trees along Oakdale, which we are doing. And the landscape architect, as well as the, uh, the arborist, will be working with us during construction to maintain the health and safety of the trees, as well as the proper planting and health and safety of new planters. What's, what we've got here, we handed out, is, this was kind of a survey that was done after we staked building corners and the wall. And then we had some photos taken to kind of go along with that. There, so the photos represent numbers that are on that top frame. So that y'all can see where, where building corners lie. So the corner, I think, that came into question at the beginning of the walk through, which, I guess in retrospect, probably somebody else should have been there as well. But our landscape architect tried to converse with some things that he probably wasn't, you know, fully familiar with. But the, the stake on the front corner of the building, the place was about two feet off. It's since then, it's out there right now, or fifth and per, yeah, fifth and main, is the proper place. So the conversation had started there and, and then the walk through, and around the corner. But that's represented on one of those photos, I don't have. We have a proper representation of building of the source. And I think, you know, one of the other questions I think that came up during the walk through was the proximity of that stake number one to the circle that doesn't, that's within and back behind our building setbacks, so it's, it's properly coded, properly placed. The other building corners still on the front, same thing, building setbacks marking that, there's that dash line along, rings it. Well, back to that for our building plans. Any questions on, on building wall corners, tree locations?
Well, certainly the trees.
Well, yeah. To answer the question, yeah, every tree that's going to be underneath the building would be gone.
Yeah.
So, so for purposes of discussion, the trees that are going to remain, they're going to have a, I think, a pretty
To answer the question, yeah, every tree that's going to be underneath the building would be gone. So, so for purposes of discussion, the trees that are going to remain, they're going to have a, I think, a pretty significant effect on our property. This tree is in a courtyard, maybe between the two buildings. It's probably one of, it is, it's the largest on height and one of the largest in diameter. Um, we're going to say that, and it's going to create a canopy, and, and you'll see, um, as we go to the canopy drawing, actually how big that tree canopy is. The other ones, there's two trees right here, in this giant planer that we created. The reason that our square footage has gone down on the, the two buildings is in order to maintain this, as well as drive around, drive around capacity in its parking. Um, those two trees remain in that canopy is pretty significant as well. Um, the other on property tree that remains, this originally was, uh, slated to come out because we had a rear voting area in this building. Um, in talking to an engineer, we came up with an alternative plan to blow it right down here to the north and keep this tree. So that's another, um, existing large, very large oak trees. Um, and as I say, I think the last one onsite is this one here, um, right out of Main Street. Trees along, uh, Main Street, uh, permanent trees that aren't our property that are remaining right here, and then trees that are on the city of property out here while learning as well.
Mentioned here.
This right here? Yeah, so, so what we have is, we're required to, um, exfiltrate all of our, uh, stormwater onsite. And so this area inside this wall, um, is that, that's exfiltrated. Now it's covered with sod, um, and it's just, you know, it's basically a small open field. Originally, we designed the wall, came back here and then over here. And what we thought in, uh, the last two tree board, uh, meetings that we had was maybe to bring that out a little bit more and create a little more intimacy back here. And then shield a little more of the, uh, open area back here. At the end of the day, um, this, the design hasn't been approved overall, you know, as the site planning hasn't. Changing into this or coming back here and going this way, um, it, it, it doesn't have any effect on our, our design. Um, this area outside is the same as grass and.
Yeah, I would like to point out that from my perspective, uh, the tree landscaping, uh, field trip that we took was. Many of the stakes were the wrong spot. Aren't able to determine which trees on the outer perimeter here are going to stay. We did make a lot of progress on the back forty, as, as you already spoke of. But, uh, this landscape architect here, he, he was supposed to give us a list of the liberals that we discussed, uh, everything from, um. Pier foundations for the buildings.
Well, landscape architect would be designing that, he's there, boy.
Um, and, 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 not, not mentioned. It was pure foundation that were discussed, the garden area discussed around that, uh, big tree there. There were multiple other things that Susan can beat them in her comments, but, um, the tree board is not finished with, with the review of the landscape and tree. Like, so we may have to carve that out from that overall process, because we're going to have to revisit that.
Well, I, I don't think it's a question of revisiting because the, the meeting that was scheduled, um, and to take place last week, um, to walk through the site, it was, was supposed to be specific to. Um, the, uh, tree root balls interaction with the new landscaping along, uh, along Oakdale. Um, so some of the other items that were brought up, I think, were outside of so that meeting really wouldn't, it wouldn't have been addressed by the landscape architect anyway. Like, he hears, I, I know he did, um, and he probably shouldn't have. Um, because, for instance, I know there was a discussion about the construction materials of the wall. We haven't determined the construction materials of the wall yet. That's, it's going to be a wall that's designed for the development area, um, because we're, it's, it's very strict as to how it's designed and what it's supposed to look like. And then it needs to go along Oakdale, but the construction materials themselves hasn't, hasn't been determined yet. So I, I kind of, I guess he probably spoke out of place, and the wall wasn't on the agenda anyway, so that will be discussed later.
Okay, but that's my fault. Stakes are all in the wrong place. Most, a lot of them are in the wrong place, especially the, the main stake at the front corner and, and the next stake down and the stake in the back will fit that. So tree, tree board was not able to determine anything on this perimeter. And so that, you know, we, we almost canceled the meeting five minutes in because, A, you know, these stakes are in the wrong place. Uh, Tommy, that spent enormous amount of time coordinating schedules of ten people or more to be here on time. You're out of this lane. You only sent the landscape architects who was making.
Well, that was still was invited to the monesses and changes that are, you know, they may or may not come to fruition.
So as far as the landscape and tree plant, we are not comfortable signing off on that at the moment.
We're not, I expect for that to be signed up right now. With all due respect, the meeting that was requested included only our arborists and our landscape architect. That's who, who was invited and that's who came.
Okay.
So I, you know, if, if we had known that it was going to be a much larger meeting and that there were going to be, you know, twelve to fifteen people from this town side that were going to be walking the site. And not just what we were told was going to be a couple of the, uh, tree board members and yourself, um, we probably would have had a more robust presence ourselves.
Well, yeah, the whole tree board was just there and, uh, you know, there was a lot of discussion about building materials, design, construction types of things, which.
Sure, sure, but again, it was outside of the soap of, of that meeting.
Uh, well, we're still waiting for the list, we'd like to see the, you know, list of liberals that we discussed and that he promised he'd give to us. And if those are not, you know, accurate representations, please note, note them accordingly on the list, come and get it.
Sure. Is there a record to go to the next?
Yeah, which one are you trying to go to?
Um, do you have that canopy?
Yeah, the blue?
Yeah. So, but this is the representation of the, uh, tree canopies. Um, and this is, this is existing only, this is existing trees only. Um, they do not include the new plantings, which will go here, and I believe there's a couple of trees that have planted in here as well. Um, so this shows the, the, this large canopy right here, just those two trees right in the middle of the property. This is the representation of the, uh, uh, tree in the, um, courtyard. This here actually is probably misrepresented, this is the, uh, rain tree that's, uh, sits on the foundation that we've already agreed with the, uh, tree board that has to be removed. It's an invasive species and, and, uh, in, in, interacts with the combination too closely, so it has to. Um, conversely, there's a tree here that is not on our property, um, but does exist, and it's also a very healthy, uh, large lago. Um, that will be remaining specifically because it's not our tree, but we'll be protecting the root ball on this as well through some sort of, um, engineered, um, foundation bridge. Uh, because it sits so close to that, uh, building. Any questions about the canopy at all and what we've attempted to do with, uh, saving the, um, trees that are on the property?
Uh, there was some discussion about a tree that is over by, uh, your number six. Our right corner. Right around where the number six is, far away, it's a large oak tree that's surrounded by undergrowth. And it's slated to come out, obviously, because it's in the, uh, I don't know, the water retention or septic area, but.
Is it, Eric, do you have the, the tree count?
It's a laurel.
It's what? It's a laurel, yeah.
But it's a very good condition.
And we're wondering if there's any way to save that tree. I know we have, you know, negotiable hours for parking spots or maybe.
Bill, are you, are you, are you talking about something that's over here in this area?
Yes.
I don't know if we have a tree that's.
It's, it's just inside the wooden fences that's there now.
Right? Are you talking about the one that's here?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I think that one was, was slated to come out because it's actually in the parking area.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that one, we have not slated to try to save it, it's, um, it's in the parking area, we can't do this with the exit, um, over there on, on Fifth Street. The way it's designed, um, it would be too good, we would lose parking, but we already don't have. So that's going to have to go ahead and come out.
Right, but we have, we have the ability to negotiate parking to save trees. Um, I'm not sure it would even affect impact if you, if it's in the driveway. So I'm just wondering if you guys could take kind of look at that and see if there's any way to work around that. And see if, you know, if it takes four parking spaces away to save this big, nice tree, would we worth looking at that? I don't know.
There are already eleven stages short.
Yeah, we're short to begin with and, and have a, a kind of a variance to deal with what we have.
This, this one would take out probably at least four slots. Um, based on the diagram you see up there, it's number fifty three, reference on the lower loop. Uh, next to there, um, underground retention.
Yeah, that was, Eric made a comment that, that the roots are going to, um, strip into our exfiltration system as well. And so it kind of affects a little bit of parking and our exfiltration system.
The wall is indenting here.
Yes.
You don't have to do that, right?
The, the, the re, well, we actually originally had a straight wall. What we wanted to do was accommodate more trees.
Okay, but we're short of parking, and quite frankly, that's my main concern. I think your operations are great and I'm glad you produced, but I'm not willing to give up parking space, so. Is there a way to re-figuring that and pick up those?
The, the wall, we're, I, I don't think we could because we're limited by the, um, volume contained in this system here. Um, for our water, and this is parking along here already. So we don't have the ability to go to the east any further. We're limited to, um, keeping the landscape and the wall back twenty feet from the right away. So we've got a very large buffer, uh, along Oakdale that we're mandated to keep as landscape area.
I think that indentation is to keep the construction away from the tree roots of the, there's a, the, there's like three, three or four, four giant, two hundred, three hundred year old oak trees on the corner.
I appreciate that, but I think we're being very generous with parking to start with, where it's not even based on what kind of businesses are going to be there. You only need to have to provide four for thousands where a fee, which is unheard of in my world. But anyways, be that it doesn't mean, I, I'm not willing to back down from that. I'm just saying upfront to start with, because we have parking issues in this town.
Right.
And they, and every time we throw another event set or do these things, it, it becomes more and more obvious, so. But the area you're negotiating might be a little actually strange, but it's. Yeah, I'm just asking, you know, that is.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think the conversation is specific to tree number fifty three, which is the laurel. And if you look in the southeast, walking only, there's eight or nine white loads. Um, as indicated in the, uh, tree survey.
Okay.
Are there any other questions regarding landscape or, we have some drawings that you can share.
Uh, there was some discussion about the tree, I'm sorry, the planters and ground, maybe, maybe come to library and, um, I don't think. I know you guys have points for, for, which, um, twenty five years ago, and, uh, there was some wonder, some discussion about using alternative plants that was better, more suitable for.
Yes.
For this area, but that's attached to the planters, so, right? Maybe it may be some flexibility in that, if the tree board is your landscape architect, should we agree on some better choices for, like?
Well, yes, sir, um, way I see that, way it's established and the way the orders were first for this P V D was to give the town and the town council opportunities to come out with a better product. Better project, but that was listed about nine years ago. So if there's something proposed, I would say in the plans, but it's actually a regulation tree board that builds corporate and at least for the town better. And also maybe the R B is okay with it in the town council, I do think you do have that, that adjustment, that's fair. One quick comment on the parking, um, just, well, you are correct on the four. There is a provision also that does say if they're, they can reduce that between a half based on protecting trees. If you run it up to three and a half, they actually come up to six feet short, based on the show right now, this is, this is.
And further than that question, um, there has been some, some conversations back and forth between, uh, the Kinnon office and landscape architect and Brian's office regarding some of the trees. So we did actually pull out some plans that were originally, that had come off that original list in favor of kind of more of what we call native species. So that's what we've been really focusing on for the landscape design, just getting more towards a more native central Florida, you know, town of the year type of.
Brad was interested, the, that this to tree board, has that been done, Brad?
I apologize, I will not do that, I will do that right now, and thank you for the findings, sir.
Okay, were there any comments on the, um, the landscape plan segment?
We're common on the site.
Sure.
So when we can search for a place to pass. Or the, uh, building falls on your traffic circle, Susan may. It's, uh, right now, that is pretty close to the traffic circle. Radiating with the different development, uh, the way it's, it's laid here, that precludes the town to potentially increase the density of the traffic circle. Have you looked at, uh, turning ring there and what that would do to you most?
Um, we've not looked at it, we've gone with the, the existing, um, building setbacks that were provided to us, uh, through the design within our property lines. Um, what I do know is that the, the plan, the ultimate plan for the, uh, roundabout is that it shifts to be southwest. Um, as if and when it's expanded, so it would be further away from our building corner, um, at that point. Secondly, and I guess just as importantly, is that, uh, as you know, with roundabout, the way that the traffic flow functions, um, it's a right turn only. So there's no real traffic impacts, uh, on my site. So where the building sits in kind of that, that urban downtown field, we're getting by bringing buildings up to property line. Um, this will affect how traffic flows because you're not, you're not anticipating traffic coming from that direction. From.
Brad, we, we've got a plan for the.
Um, I think this should be just that.
We've been having ongoing discussions with Kinnon more associates, they're traffic engineers, uh, the engineers that are, as I said. Uh, the thought was, is that we can expand to the west to limit any eminent domain, um, issues. And we can reduce the footprint of the internal portion of the roundabout as opposed to going out. You can come in a little bit, um, and take away some of the brick portion. So there would be rooms to the west of the roundabout and then reduce the, uh, the internal footprint. Nothing's been a hundred percent designed, it's just been all conceptual at this point.
Anything else on the site?
We still on landscape?
Would you like to talk about landscape at this time?
I was just going to ask, um, did you look at doing maybe a, a two-story parking or something?
I think that the, um, let me answer your question, no. Um, and, and really the, the emphasis for that would be that we have building high limits, um, that are relatively concerning on this property. And even a two-story parking garage. And even a two-story parking garage would probably get close to those building height limits. And I only know that from, I've done some, some parking garage tests. Property of the largest would be the senior parking garage in downtown Orlando, which is, you know, seven stories and then we expanded it to nine. So between the requirements for footings and the height limitations, it really, it wouldn't lend itself to a property that's small. And, and there's no other property that we can buy, so we, it kind of sucks. I need to.
Visual impact, especially on the rear.
It also loses your tree candy because we go up necessarily so high with any trees that would have to be trimmed up to accommodate with ten oak trees. So what, council meeting, what are the remaining deliverables for the tree board?
Can Susan Carter, the promise, comment?
Like to kind of address the council on the. Tree boards, renovations.
Susan Carter, Mayor Tree Board, from Sixth Hall Street. My comments are primarily, they've gone great efforts and wants to, to work together and I appreciate that. Some of our concerns were how far the building is going forward and if it's gonna directly change. It's likely if we come into town, it's gonna change the feel of the wood that we've had in the past. So that's going to be concerning for a lot of people, especially since the landscape there. They use it's primarily sun only. Talking to this, the, we had initially discussed thinking that range tree as it's not considered invasive in that environment. And that the building is going right out of the asset, so it will need to be. Leading to the patio tree, we appreciate the efforts to save this tree. Coming in with formidable papers requires taking down incredible roots and around the tree that we just saved. So we'd like to. Ask and see if there's a better way that we can do this, better protect this one tree that we've saved into the buildings. I'm happy to hear that we're considering, because there are two trees, I believe, directly impacted on the side of the Morgan building, the brick building. That are on the neighbor's property. I'm happy to sit here that we're there considering and like to ask and request that they do that. Coming in with a different foundation in order to protect those tree roots, so they do not become a hazard for the neighbor. Additionally, they, they, maybe the lighting is saying it's greatly appreciated, saving another tree. And after our meeting last week, I can promise you, none of us were looking to save in sunshine. People want to be where they're saved. And it is heavily landscaped around, so there are significant trees and that will compete with the rich structures and the rich environments. Low in depth, we requested that they come in with something more natural. Something that would not compete with these trees that we just tried to protect, so that we do not end up next to more impacting these trees. I think primarily those are my concerns. Again, they've gone great lengths on the fencing, we have to see the fencing adjusted around the fence. And that's it, I guess, that's primarily it.
Any questions for Susan, the board of the tree board?
The question, are you satisfied with the amount of trees that they have saved since our last conversation?
I believe, yeah. Yes, I know, I am frustrated with the fact that there have been a few more impacted that were probably not initially impacted or discussed it. That they, they're never backwards and as long as we can protect, many of these are on the town right away, as long as they're continually protected. And we make sure that they're not negatively impacted by construction threats or whatever. Also, I'm gonna include in that excessive framing in order to accommodate threats and things like that, right?
So just continue work with tree board, please, to.
Well, I think that, you know, to make sure that we have what we need. That we would be able to put in some guidelines and assurances from that, that will protect on those items. The protection of the existing trees, those, those surfaces so they don't get run over too much and as well as, you know, excessive framing. I know we're gonna have to do some framing to do what needs to come down there, but I'd like to put that in the ground. We could make sure we have assurances in waiting, so we're not back here at some other point, kind of, hey, you said, she said. I'd like to avoid as much of that as we possibly can. Brad, he hasn't left.
Yes, sir, Mayor, I scored exactly what you said, a requirement of this project is to do exactly that. Before, when they come for their final approval, one of the things that has to be provided is a tree protection mitigation plan. To address everything you said, Mr. Mayor, with the tree board, their new recommendation, their new recommendation by the development board and ultimately by the town council. So you will have that as part of that final adoption package.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, Brad. And thank you, Susan, thank the tree board for all their hard work and this is. Thankless work, but.
There, there, yes. I wanna second what Susan said about the applicant and their level of cooperation. They have gone to great lengths to see the tree board's side of things and to preserve as many trees as possible. And there are, there and the rest of the team has really taken into account everything that we have talked about. Yeah, we've had some communication issues, but for the most part, I think they really are seeing the vision. Or trying to, you know, see where, see it from the tree board's side of things and preserve as many trees as possible. And work to, you know, keep the ones that we are keeping safe and healthy. So we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. After as well as as well. Brandon, I did promise you, you can. Go back on that promise.
Brandon Haines, eight three five, fifth Street. I was out there for the walkthrough and I do, on paper, agree that so far they've seemed to do everything they can to save the trees. My concern is when we were out there that when we were talking where the stake was that day. The landscape architect told us that, no, that stake should really be five feet further back. And with that being said, we were gonna save the palm, we were gonna be saving a couple of those other trees. Now we're saying it's only two feet. So I haven't walked it since the new stakes have been there, I don't know if anyone else has. But a lot of those trees that we were saving when this line was moving five feet. May not be true now if it's only moving two feet from where that stake was. In addition to that, in an effort to save the trees, because we are so close to the tree roots with an actual building sitting on top and a road on the other side. There was all this discussion about putting these different types of footers, which the, you know, the applicant is now saying, well, no, the architects didn't have the right to say that. So will, if they are not going to do that, are we still actually saving those trees? Because the impacts would be pretty severe to the roots on all the trees on the front, at least the first building. So I'd like to know an update on how many trees really can be saved based on this new line? Because it is constantly switching back and forth. And if you impact the roots that critically, it's not gonna matter to save the trees. The other thing is is that, you know, I wanna make sure for the record that, and this was brought up at the beginning as well when Brad Cornelius explained that. Curvaceous fibers mean curvaceous, it just not mean cracks in between the different blocks, which is another thing that came up from the landscape architect. That Brad was explaining, when it's curvaceous fibers, you know, they must be curvaceous, the water must circulate through the actual paper, not just through the cracks beside it. And at the time, the landscape architects said that there's this that worked and we need to make sure we do this. We talked about mulching them, we talked about putting just racks around the trees, why do we need any kind of fibers other than ABA compliance? But they, they made the promise, I think it was back in April when they had the meeting, they were saying thirty-three trees, thirty-one trees, I don't remember the exact number. But I feel like that number has changed and I would like to know what that is, as well as the residents. And they weren't here tonight because they, I mean, I didn't know this was on the agenda, but I have been in contact with Deborah Neal and Kit and Boone that live next door. As well as the points that live on the third house there, I do not know the fourth residence and they want to know how many trees are, aren't being saved. Saved and on which side, you know, with the walls. So there's a lot of discussion about the walls too, and that would be told, those walls, walls weren't there. So, you know, there were more than eleven people there, all three, three of the four residents that live there, they took their time to come out. I took my time to come out, the entire tree board was there. And I understand from their perspective, the meeting was, you know, they weren't expecting that many people, but our meetings are publicized. There's no secret about that and all the residents have a right to come, whether they live there or they're just not very concerned about the trees. So, you know, in the future, I think if, if the landscape architect should be answering all those questions, questions like that might come up. Then they need to make sure they have two representatives in the field because it's a waste of my time, the residents' time. It was fodder and ADs out there, councils out there and it's a lot of us that started with them. It's back and forth and this drawing isn't right. And I literally heard the landscape architect tell the whole tree board, oh, the drawings you have are the most up to date, don't even look at those. I mean, that's a sort of waste of time for council, the residents, everybody who was out there. So, and for future references, they need to be out there, because I know the contracts say, well, we'll do two public meetings or we'll do this. I've read all the contracts. I don't want them coming down the road later saying, oh, well, we've already done that, we've already got it. Now, some of those residents, they might want another walkthrough. And the people who care about the trees in this town might want another walkthrough. If they didn't have the proper representatives there, that's on them. So I don't have to be out there for another walkthrough, we all walk through the tree board, so that's all.
Yeah, for this, again, they're required to have three workshops and then they still have to go through and get final approvals with the town council. So council's not. Comfortable with the final plan that they're coming up with as far as tree mitigation and or tree plan. And, you know, they're setting themselves up for failure. But I do believe that the applicant has committed to continue to work with the tree board, whether it needs additional meetings, to ensure that that would be in their best interest to do so. But putting the trees aside, I'm not saying that's not a big issue, I think it's a very big issue. Relative to everything else you see in our plans, just so we can. Get a little, you know, moving closer to the goal line, is there anything else that you could see in this plan as submitted in the agenda packet? That would be hard earned yet or do you think would be something that you would. In favor of the renderings, the parking, the location of the loading zone, the dumpster location, which we exchanged. And the entrance and exits, which they're part of the off of Fifth and Sixth, so nothing on Oakdale.
I mean, for me, I think we're turning in the right direction. I think that's for what I really prefer to drive to be dead, closer together. So, you know, for me, trending in that direction. I, I do want us to make sure that we are careful with, you know. Have those stakes and markers and things in the right places, so we are making sure that we're getting the correct investment relations. I know that's everyone's goal, I'm not exactly sure what happened, but, you know, as we were working on the meeting, that is the case. And then I'll let, I'll let each compliment you where they are in terms of the process.
And limiting the elevations as well, if there's any hard against you, the, you know, the. The look, the view, maybe like that, but I believe it meets the commercial standards.
It ties to the design standards, is that true, Brad?
Yes, sir, it is very.
Make sure your mic is always. Come back to this.
Yes, yes, and the other thing that still needs to be worked out is, I mean, we require initial colors, more detail than we have here. There's also a little concern, I think the sign might be a little bit large and won't be allowed, but again, what they're required to apply. Before you approve anything are the specific sizes, colors and design of the sign as well. But I don't see anything there that really jumps out as a concern, particularly if the house is comfortable with.
Thank you, sir.
I like the elevation. How about the trees? I just, the, the stakes, we're not in the right place, we do need to revisit that, we do need to go back out and walk again. And, I mean, they're way up, they're like four feet up here, the one in the back corner is. Twelve feet away from where we're supposed to be. So I consider that being ample. And so as far as minimum number of meetings that you, you know, you're supposed to have three workshops, you can have one. Or we can, we can have one, so I would like to request another fairly quick site walkthrough with. Landscape architect and maybe an engineer, in case questions come up. Because he did, he did make a lot of promises that we knew. You know, he shouldn't have been, you know, answering those questions, you know. Post and beam, construction, Peter foundations, all that kind of stuff. It's, it was something that I wish they, you know, one of the engineers who was there would.
But, well, I think if, if, to your comment, if that had been known to us, that that was gonna be the, the, the level of. Complexity of meeting, then we probably would have had more people there. Marcus certainly would have, our engineer record certainly would have been there if there was any discussion about, you know, building locations and building foundation design and things like that. So I apologize that, you know, things kind of went off the rails there. And, and just to comment about the stakes, in an effort to get things back on track, we did have an actual licensed surveyor go out and stake every corner of the. Of where the wall was supposed to go and to comment to the resident. We have thirty-two trees that are still being saved. I think the original meeting that we had were thirty-one, so there's an additional tree. In addition to that, there's been some offset trees with the neighbor that are being saved as well, but I don't know if they were contemplated or not, so. And we're certainly willing to go back and do another walkthrough with all of us.
I don't know either. I think just to cover. Somebody that could, could, you know, cover maybe engineering questions and then. We did make a lot of progress, but we did have to eliminate the, the big frontage. Because we couldn't figure out where the lines were. So i- in order for the tree board to be comfortable, and I'm not suggesting we hold anything up, I would like to move forward. And then maybe just go and, you know, with the contingency that the tree board goes, meets what he does, maybe for an hour. We don't have to go really long, we just wanna make sure that everybody's comfortable to enter and we'll follow up with that.
Because really what we're looking for is the, the difference between where the stakes were at this walkthrough versus. Versus what changes were the stakes in the proper location that may be some. That, that may impact some areas, it may not impact other areas based upon the state location. So I think that would be the, the, the key item that. Never allow a swing forward. Okay. What we did as well, the package that you all received tonight with the photographs attached to the survey with the stakes on it. The photographs include where the original stakes were versus where they are now. I don't think there's anything, it's not like twelve feet, except for, but most of the stakes were off like, you know, two feet, three feet, four feet. Anyway. I'm pretty sure developers will, real quick, as a quote statement, effective, developers' goal would be to, we can have a meeting and finalize things with the tree board and students group as soon as we can. This week, next week, we're fine, you know, we can have our team out as soon as possible. And then in between now and when we schedule our, our next workshop, we'd like to have our, our elevations, our signage. We, we do have color elevations, they should have gotten into the package and so there's a color board and a materials board as well. As well as some design criteria that the wall will incorporate, which is, you know, stuff like here with columns that are spaced every probably. That will mimic the brick facade on the bill with some concrete caps on top of the columns, so.
Tom, for some wings?
Yeah, I got it, sir.
My question has to do with the eleven spaces for short parking. How is that attractive? Because retail, office and a restaurant is all considered different on the number three. So how do we come up with a, what was that based on?
In, in your downtown design guidance, the district, it actually has a flat rate. It doesn't have a differential between uses like outside of the district. So it is straight, four spaces, as the road says, four spaces per thousand. And we reduced to three and a half, three and a half spaces per thousand. and we reduce to three and a half, three and a half spaces per thousand based on tree preservation. So your design guidance actually has its own way of parking outside of your other grids, which is the way that was done.
And then every, probably get a restaurant, you know. Our problem. All right, I was just kind of curious, I've done the gentleman group, it's a calculating based on things and all that, so.
Four to three and a half, the council won't accept your preservation. Okay, but that's your answer.
Yeah, I think we all made a lot of good progress, a lot, a lot of work, too. Transparency, a lot of information.
Here we are, so why, why do you need to add something?
So, the propane tank is a direct result of negotiations that we have with Walter Tool, Neil, with Tools, this hardware. They sell propane, you know, car pulls up, drops the tank off, somebody from the company from these hardware goes to take a, from a, from a, from a. The seven thousand square foot building is designed to be a complete place hardware. Thank you. Forward, any progress?
I am a street.
Let's go, we'll search the town.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody will not be the first, I don't like it, but. Susan, any additional items for the tree board? You're comfortable with the follow-up you need? For the record, Susan said yes and not at this. Staff, can you give me further directions this time? Oh, you did?
Yes.
Come on up.
Maybe you should see this cartoon this time.
You can only imagine, I'll be just in my smiling face.
My car tends to rent garden, oh, hell, oh, hell, oh, hell. So my comment is about Fifth Avenue for one. I think you need to require Fifth Avenue to be surveyed, because I think there's a big problem with any trucks out of this property on the fifth, on the main. I think Fifth Avenue is cut up ten feet with what is designed, so if you're looking at the design zone, you're not knowing what Fifth Avenue is going to do. We need to have Fifth Avenue surveyed. There's also a large row of trees on the north side of Fifth Avenue, the board needs to look at, because they have to go to the wide fifth to get trucks out. You've got five hundred and fifty. Anyway, that's just one observation. The other observation is that one facade of building doesn't date with the building itself. You know, you're kind of in a section, it's your back of the building, it's inside of the building, all of the facilities, facade here.
See, that's why we had to build the end.
Huh?
That's why we had to build the end.
Just another comment for the, you're putting landscape under the tree board, and they've got several hedges along that back wall, there's one side of plant going all the way to the end of it, from this side to the wall this side. And it's one of the wood and the natural plants under shade inside. What you need to do is take that whole landscape and then follow out the current that got and make it into a diverse versus a strong for plant, everything, and move that in the back. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Let me, let me do this, it's just a workshop, we can get a little bit of a little trace, is there any additional to hold on to? We're going to let Angela and Bob serve it, but.
This job, we do as an architect, and you become very keen, and yourself about architecture. We've got five architects in the family, eight with a seven door renter. It reminds me of concern when that facade, that corner, I want all of you to think three dimensionally, coming around that corner, the tallest thing is on the corner of Sixth and that turn. We have been used to having very wide sort of deal coming to town, and you've got a tower, this looks like every old shopping center in, in Orlando. They have towers on the ends, right? And we've got a tower, it should be so down, and ideally, we should be cutting off a bit of that corner. That corner is something close, coming so close to that roundabout. Most people I know have a hard time visualizing the three dimensions. Suddenly, we've got a right angle, oink, coming right close to the, there's a tower on top of it. And we've been used to this lovely feel of coming in the end of it, it's more open, there's trees, everything else is back. I want you to really visualize that, I think we've got to address that, it's a huge, you know, the trees are important, but that's really.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, just, that's, just brings up a question for the designer. So are you guys doing, the design is Revit or anything modeling?
I'm sorry.
Are you guys designing in Revit or in modeling techniques?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Sir, it's just one second.
Yes, I, I, unless you are, you are going to use some Revit or.
So part of the deliverables here be a tree model that you bring to the council or the advisor?
Yeah. Look at that, it'd be cool to. That's all I'm going to say about the, the questions that's, any additional information that you wanted to hear? Or you must be certain of your, so, guys just speak your head to me. We have a gentleman's report on it. Do you have your name and address?
Daniel Floyd, five oh five of Fifth Street. And first question, this is the first time I've heard about propane tank sales. Is this going to be in a above ground or a underground propane tank?
It's underground, it's underground.
And then, the other thing that I heard today, but I think we're all agreed with, but to be on the record, please don't put a whole tight story garage in this, thank you. And then the last question I had is, this is workshop number two. We, I feel like we've kind of already done these workshops, we're still missing a lot, too.
I, I think what I'm telling you to make you feel better about that is, we'll have as many workshops as, as it takes to get us where we need to go. Everybody's very invested in making sure that we use, like, we transparently and everybody has a pretty good feel of where we're on, what we're going to have before we're.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, but then the last thing is just, I'm looking forward to seeing the, the wall plants grow, I guess.
That's probably one of the next steps as we get going, I know that everybody's interested in that. You know, variations that, that, get everybody to, something that, it does what it needs to do, but doesn't look so imposing.
Sure, thank you.
I have a question, did we, did we, I don't need to discuss the height of the, of the wall, that meanders from Sixth Avenue. Just lowering that from six feet, three, three, that's just a visual process. And last question is on the, on the turret or tower, is that, or that? Functional space or, or decorative? Okay, so it's not going to be Robert's new office up there, or the St. King's?
There's already too many rumors going around about my office. And one, do you want to, please don't have the other one pass.
I just remember where the people, you had to meet the, you had to meet the other meeting. So it doesn't necessarily have to be verified from tall, like, maybe that's a flexible, to go back to Angel's point about the post and tower. I know you don't want it at all, but, you know, still with the design of things, so, all right, thank you. Randy, here's the meeting.
Yes, sir.
And staff, we're good, or any additional information to the council?
Mayor, I could just see if it will, what goes next in terms of the process.
Yes, that would be, that would be your next.
So I had to say, Mayor, you know, you all will hold as many workshops as you feel is necessary before we go forward. What happens once you are ready to let it go? Here is what the steps are, is that the tree board will have to make a formal recommendation based on tree mitigation, the tree protection, the landscape plan, the wall plan, everything related to landscape. The tree board will make a recommendation to the developer and you board. Then the developer and group board will hold their public hearing, they will review it, and they take them where they want to be, you know, they, whatever the outcome that they do. They then will make a recommendation to the town council, you will then, it will be an ordinance to you with the development agreement addressing all the issues that we've addressed, and there will be two public hearings for that as well. The other thing that has not been addressed yet, which will be, I believe should come before you, before you go, is there's also the requirement in, in the ordinance for this project for them to do payments to the town to participate in transportation improvements. What the requirement within the ordinance for this project says is they provide a, a share of the payment for the improvements to the roundabout at Sixth and Main, as well as the pedestrian crossing at Oakdale and Sixth. So they have that, so that is something that doesn't need to be discussed with the council to come to what that would be. There's also a requirement related to an agreement related to utilities. And it's pretty straightforward, given it's forthcoming utilities coming in and, and they're doing the septic, but that would be another agreement that, that will need to be approved by the council as part of that. Again, it won't get approved until it comes to you through your hearings, but I believe that would be a good topic to be addressed second next workshop as well, so you have that discussion before. Of all the issues, that's really the only issue that hasn't been brought forward to the council this far, are those things.
Thank you, sir.
One more public comment? Thank you, I'm sure, please, number one, I said it. I would just like to, on the record, to say that I'd also like to see a single store organization of that kind. Just for the record, because it seems to be that a lot of times stuff is not said, and they brought it up later and now, so I didn't need to say that. So I just, for the record, I'd like to also see a rendition of this, a single story there. I think the design was great, you guys did a great job on that, but I think the single story would be more, uh, more practical for that environment.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Council, any further comments, concerns, or questions for the season's workshop? Staff has the direction we need to go forward to get everybody's thinking, our work that's behind the scenes.